It's chaos, everybody, chaos. All right, everybody, welcome to this evening's meeting. It's 7:40. We are called to order. Please rise and pledge the flag. Roll call, please.
Saba Al Zayed.
Here.
Amy Funahashi.
Here.
James Fee.
Here.
Sorry. Uh, James Fee.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Kyle Schenk.
Here.
Mr. President, I note for the record that we were in executive session with regard to potential litigation as well as personnel issues and contract negotiations from about 7:30, uh, I'm sorry, from about 7 o'clock till about 7:41.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. And, uh, Mr. Truman, before we start the business, I'm just going to get a quick point of privilege. And, uh, folks, some of you know this, some of you don't. Councilwoman Amy Funahashi just got married last weekend. So she is no longer Councilwoman Amy Funahashi. We just can't afford a new name tag, but Amy, uh, on all of our behalfs. Congratulations, everybody. Uh, appreciate your, your patience with that. Okay. Mr. Truman.
The, uh, the nameplate is, uh, is on order. First up for council consideration, approval of the September 27th, 2022 meeting minutes.
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Nolan, seconded by Ms. Gundrum to approve the September 27 meeting minutes. Questions from council on those minutes or from the public on those minutes? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Very good. And next up for council consideration, approval of the October 11th, 2022 meeting minutes.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Heil, right? Yes, okay, excellent. Seconded by Ms. Heil. Uh, questions or comments from the council or the public on those minutes? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. And next up, we have a presentation, uh, of the 2022 Bridgeport 5K beneficiary presentation to the Montgomery County Hero Fund. Uh, I see that, um, Mr. and Mrs. Cullen are, uh, are here in the audience. Um, we had a, uh, we had a great, uh, great event as always on October 1st. Um, we, you know, little, uh, weather did not help us this time. I'd say the first time in five years that we've had, uh, a bad weather day, but, uh, still through the, uh, through the participation of our, uh, our, our great registrants and, uh, our fantastic corporate sponsors, um, when it's all said and done, we were able to, uh, commit proceeds, uh, in the amount of $6,000 towards, uh, the county here, the Monco, the, excuse me, the Monco Hero Fund, which is, uh, a fantastic organization. And with that, President Schenk, if, uh, if you had anything else that you wanted to add?
Uh, no, I'd like to go down and give the man his money. But, Mr. Cullen, if you'd like to, uh, maybe just take a moment and the mic and just sort of describe the mission of the, uh, of the organization.
So the Montgomery County Hero Fund was founded after the tragic murder of Brad Fox, Plymouth Police Officer and United States, uh, Veteran, a Marine. Uh, his wife at the time was pregnant with their second child. Uh, we basically, a group of friends got together and decided that we were going to do a fundraiser and everything was going well except Sandy hit four days before the event. So we're calling in favors with Pico for Electric. We've got front-end loaders taking mud off of the road with, uh, PennDOT, and we just called all the favors and we were able to pull it off. But we realized we had to have something available and ready to go at a moment's notice. We couldn't always be playing catch-up. So the Montgomery County Heroes Fund's mission is to guarantee that the acts of a hero are never in vain and that a fireman, police officer, military, first responder, and their families in the time of tragedy will always be taken care of. And one of the things that we pride ourselves on, we're an all-volunteer group, is that 100% of every dollar raised for a specific family during a time of tragedy goes to that family. So what we do is we do separate fundraisers to help supplement credit card fees, fees for throwing fundraisers, anything to make sure that when somebody gives money to a family in a time of tragedy, they know that all of that is going to that family. So this money from, from Bridgeport is incredibly important to us. We love Bridgeport. We love being part of the 5K. Uh, the weather wasn't that bad. You should have seen Sunday. So, uh, but I did want to thank you and let you all know that the money will go, of course, to a family in need. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Cullen.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Big show job. Thank you, as always.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
We have, uh, we have an item we're going to, uh, to table for now. It's not, we don't need to vote to table, but there was a presentation on the agenda.
That's correct. Uh, it, the, after, uh, after the agenda had already been, uh, set and issued, uh, it came to our attention that, uh, Officer Sell is, uh, is unavailable due to a, um, a previously arranged, uh, training session, so we will forestall that to a, uh, to a later date. Next up on the agenda, authorization to purchase a 2023 Ford Hybrid Police Interceptor from New Holland Auto Group in the amount of $44,455. Uh, members of council, I believe it was at the, I believe it was at the first September meeting, um, council had provided a, uh, a, a blanket authorization to allow Chief Beretta and I to, uh, to proceed with, um, finding, sourcing, uh, and ultimately purchasing a, uh, a new police vehicle, uh, resultant from, uh, our, our, our need in the fleet because of the 2019 Chevy Tahoe that was, uh, totaled back in, um, in late July, early August. Um, and council did provide that, uh, that, that authorization. Uh, at this time, um, Chief Beretta has been able to source a, uh, a replacement vehicle, and while we don't have it in hand, Chief is going to have to, uh, place the, uh, place the order, uh, which he already did, uh, out of necessity. Um, as I had stated at that meeting, when we actually had the precise dollar figure and make and model, uh, we would bring it back to council for, uh, for formal authorization.
And this is just as you discussed in the last meeting, so this isn't a surprise, is what we've been discussing.
That is correct. And, um, just as a reminder, we received slightly over $42,000 in, uh, in, in re, in insurance claim money to, uh, to defray this $44,000 cost.
In that case, I will make a motion to authorize purchase.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Nolan to authorize the purchase of the new vehicle for the police department. Questions or comments from the council?
Uh, quick question. When will this vehicle be in, in commission? When will, when will we be getting it?
Good question. Uh, hopefully within eight months. Um, Ford actually, we, of course, these supply and demand problems actually had a one-week window for which to order. One week. So there's a lot of people that if you didn't get with somebody that actually had purchased 300 vehicles or 200 vehicles, you weren't getting a vehicle, um, and you might have to wait in a whole nother year until the following year. So, um, I would expect about eight, uh, about eight months. We have some of the parts, um, and still being a, a similar vehicle, hybrid, electric, that has been very successful so far.
Let's snap that up, I guess.
Uh, other questions or comments from anybody? Public on the, on the vehicle? All right, seeing none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up for council consideration, advertisement of ordinance 2022-4, reappointing Portnoy Associates as the solicitor responsible for delinquent collections and establishing attorney and collections fees. Members of council, in your packets, uh, you will find, hey, bear with me here, ladies and gentlemen. The, uh, the draft ordinance, um, that, uh, if, if approved, we would be submitting for, uh, advertisement, uh, this week in the Times Herald for, uh, for adoption at the, uh, the first meeting in November. I believe that is, uh, November 9th. Um, due to some changes in, uh, state and federal regulations, uh, regarding how delinquent collections, uh, firms and attorneys, uh, proceed with their fee structure and how that's passed on to the, uh, to the account holder. Um, Portnoy Associates, our delinquent collection solicitor, is asking us to reaffirm their, uh, reaffirm their position as the delinquent collection solicitor and to, uh, to reestablish the, uh, the fees associated with both attorney fees and collection fees associated with their, uh, pursuit of our delinquent accounts.
And I think we've been pretty pleased with their work. We haven't had any issues over the years. Um, but I know that a lot of the problems with, um, the delinquents are actually the same people over and over again, or, and oftentimes people who aren't even in the borough, correct?
I would say that is correct. Yes, sir.
Well, I'll make a motion to advertise.
I'll second. The motion's from Mr. Heil, seconded by Mr. Fee to advertise the ordinance reappointing Portnoy. Questions or comments from the council or from the public? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, next up for council consideration, approval of bills and salaries for the month of October 2022.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Gundrum, seconded by Ms. Al Zayed. Uh, to pay the people the bills and salaries. Any other questions from council or the public? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
And next up on the agenda, a presentation, ladies and gentlemen, the moment you've all been waiting for, uh, the introduction back to budget season. Uh, as is, uh, traditional, we will begin the budget process for 2023, uh, with a, uh, listing of the capital projects requests from each respective department. I will note that, um, the many of, if not the majority of, the requests from each department are carryovers from the 2022 and, in some cases, the 2021 capital funds budget. Uh, and for one reason or another, namely, um, cost increases resultant from, uh, the inflation and the, uh, the economic market that we've been experiencing and/or supply chain problems, uh, we were unable to proceed with, uh, said purchase in '21 or '22. So we are again, uh, ramping up to, uh, with any luck, uh, make these purchases in 2023. First and foremost, the police department capital requests. Uh, number one, a new patrol vehicle, which is the item that, um, that we just covered, uh, a couple of action items ago. Um, even though council authorized the purchase this evening, as Chief Beretta said, um, the vehicle won't be here for, you know, optimistically, another six to eight months, and it'll be, uh, much closer to that time when we actually, uh, you know, render payment to, uh, New Holland Auto Group for that vehicle. And in, in addition to, uh, the, the face value of the vehicle, we will also have to put some money into, uh, to upfitting. And, uh, the police department has the overall cost estimated there at, uh, slightly over $69,000. Number two, an APX 6,000 portable radio package, which is one of those aforementioned carryover requests expenditures from last year's budget, uh, estimated at $5,000. Uh, ongoing membership to the Bode or Bodie DNA program, $7,500, and the, uh, the "A" in parentheses there denotes an annual ongoing charge. Um, number four, license plate reader cameras, estimated cost of that project would be $78,500. You'll see some asterisks after, um, several of these numbers, and I'll explain why in a moment. Um, number five, pistol replacement. All of our officers, or the majority of our officers' firearms are coming due, um, expiring. Their, the, the, the end of their useful service is coming to an end, uh, this coming year, and the police department plans on making a, um, a, uh, a staff-wide purchase for replacing those firearms. Estimated cost of $13,620. And some assorted equipment, uh, estimated cost of $6,000. That includes a, uh, a portable truck scale, uh, I believe, a, uh, a taser, and, uh, some other sundry items. A total capital funding request from the police department for 2023 is $179,685. Um, as I referenced before, the, some of those items have asterisks next to them. That is because, uh, each of those items will either be partially or fully, excuse me, funded by either grants or some other avenue of funding. Uh, the patrol vehicle, as we noted, we have $42,000 and change in insurance reimbursement money that can, uh, be allocated to offset that purchase price. The license plate reader cameras, uh, through the, uh, through the efforts of Mayor Jack Seer, and a PCCD grant, uh, we, in the amount of $78,500, uh, should cost us nothing if not very little. And we also have, um, additional set-aside money to, uh, to pay for the lion's share of the pistol replacement. Um, that may end up costing us, uh, a couple hundred dollars, um, out of pocket, uh, net of what we have set aside. So while the capital funding requests for the police department total just about $180,000, $134,056 of that would be covered by grants and other funding. Any questions on the, on the PD capital requests?
I don't want to, uh, give anybody any ideas, Chief, but that's actually pretty modest. Uh, I, I appreciate what you're doing down there. It's, uh, it's a good use of the money, good use of the dollars.
It's a lot of, uh, some, some of these things, like with, uh, with, uh, the mayor and the PCCD thing with the stationary LPR, that's game changer. Bodie DNA, game changer. Those are just long-term things that some people haven't invested in, so, you know, the costs are rather low for the amount of things that we're getting.
I think those are the kind of things that can, one time that they pay off is worth every penny that we spend. So, great.
Yeah, and I appreciate that we have an administration and mayor and chief that can work together to get things for the police department for public safety. And so I thank you all of you.
Uh, next up for consideration would be the Public Works Department capital requests. Uh, first up, we have a, uh, skid steer, uh, also known, uh, you know, colloquially as a bobcat. Um, the estimated, uh, the estimated price on a skid steer, uh, is $55,000. Our current skid steer is 26 years old and is literally, um, rusting and, and rotting apart. Um, we have certainly gotten our money out of the, uh, the, the current device and the current, uh, piece of machinery that we have. Uh, number two is another one of those carryovers from, uh, from the 2022 budget, a replacement truck, a Ford F-350, a Super Duty truck. Um, we are, there will be another, this is the first of two trucks that will be requested in this capital, this round of capital funding. Um, one is a streets crew truck, one is a sewer department truck. Uh, both of the, uh, both of the trucks that we currently have in our fleet are in very rough shape. Uh, the sewer department's truck is, uh, is, is rotting and, and falling apart. Uh, the, uh, the streets crew truck has actually had its bed replaced already because it was in such bad condition due to, you know, storing road salt in the wintertime. So we may, there's a possibility that we, we keep one of those two trucks and auction the other one off. Um, but, um, like the police vehicle, there is going to be a window opening, as a matter of fact, this week for, uh, for myself and the Public Works, uh, foreman, to place orders, um, through Ford to secure two trucks. Um, and we, uh, we intend to, uh, we intend to proceed in, in doing so. Um, and number three is the street paving project. Now, as council is aware and the audience who, uh, who follow along is aware, we have authorized, uh, and awarded the, uh, the contract for this street paving project to Alan Myers, and with any luck, this project is completed in 2022. Uh, however, there is the possibility that for, um, if, if weather doesn't continue to permit, uh, or from other circumstances arise, that this project is pushed into 2023. So as a, uh, just as a, uh, a fallback plan, as it were, uh, I did include, uh, the 2022 or potentially 2023, as it were, street paving project in with the, uh, capital requests for, uh, for this coming year. And the, uh, price tag on that is $710,000, $710,450. Uh, so the total capital funding request from Public Works, uh, for 2023 has the potential to be $825,450. And again, uh, with the, uh, the asterisk there, that denotes that, um, of that $825,450, $413,000 of that would be covered by grants. So, uh, almost exactly half of that would be covered by grant monies. Any questions regarding the Public Works capital requests? Seeing none, uh, we will proceed to building maintenance slash parks slash administration capital requests. Um, the only item in this category would be, uh, administrative in nature, and that is yet another carryover from 2022's budget. It would be the digitizing and shredding of historical documents, and, um, I would earmark that, uh, that cost to be, uh, $15,000, and that would be honestly a starter or seed money for, uh, for an ongoing project. Um, as many of you are aware, we store the, uh, the majority of our historical documents in our basement, and just like a large portion of our community, um, our basement is inundated with floodwater, uh, whenever we have a hurricane or otherwise high-water event. Um, we have lost a lot, we have lost a lot of historical documents, um, especially during Ida this, this last time. Um, and we need to begin digitizing and dedicating these documents to electronic format rather than, uh, leaving them susceptible to the perils of our basement. Um, $15,000 is not going to cover the entire cost of, of getting all of them digitized, but it would be, uh, a very good start. Any questions there? All right, very good. Uh, moving on to the sewer fund capital requests. Um, number one, ongoing CSO downfall monitoring expenses, uh, estimated, or not estimated, uh, contracted at $36,000. This is part of a, uh, seven-year contract that we, uh, signed with a, um, with a, with a firm some years back, um, which is part of our cooperation, uh, with, uh, with the Department of Environmental Protection for monitoring the sewer outfalls that we have that, uh, that, that discharge to the Schuylkill River. It is a mandatory expense. Uh, number two, the, number two of the, uh, the second of the two aforementioned, uh, replacement trucks, again, estimated at $60,000. That would be a 2023 Ford F-350. Number three, uh, blacktop repairs at the sewer plant lot. There are some, uh, pretty sizable ruts and deterioration of the asphalt down at the, uh, at the plant. Uh, we had, uh, an estimate done on repaving the entire lot, and we found that to be cost prohibitive. Uh, however, there are some smaller segments of the lot that do need some pretty immediate attention, and we are hopeful that, uh, the cost in the vicinity of $20,000 should be able to, uh, to address those. And then, uh, number four, we have two large, uh, what are referred to as Chicago submersible pumps at the main pumping station, you know, right off the, uh, the banks of the Schuylkill, between the Schuylkill and the train tracks at our main pumping station, um, that, uh, are in need of rebuild. And I say in need of rebuild because the other option would be, uh, potentially purchasing replacements, and the estimated cost of purchasing replacements would be anywhere from $96,000 to $130,000. So, uh, as an alternative, uh, there is a firm, uh, that we have dealt, a vendor that we've dealt with in the past, um, who specializes in baking or rebuilding pumps, and the, uh, cost estimate that we received is, um, about $13,900, just short of $14,000, and I think, uh, that would probably be the most, uh, the most economic, uh, path to follow for 2023. And then there are two other items listed below that. Um, there is a sinkhole, uh, underneath, underneath our primary trickling filter that, um, we continue to look for potential, uh, federal funding to help, uh, offset the cost of, uh, repairing. Um, hopefully with some of this, uh, Infrastructural Improvement Act, uh, funding that's coming through the pipeline, we might, uh, have finally found our meal ticket there, um, to, to help us, uh, offset what is ultimately could be a pretty sizable, uh, pretty sizable chunk of money. Uh, and then we also have the, uh, the Hurst Street Basin separation, which would be part of the long-term control plan that the Borough has entered into, um, mandatorily, uh, I might add, uh, hand-in-hand with, uh, again, with, in cooperation with the DEP. Um, while I would not state definitively that this is a project that is going to be done in 2023, and I would actually say to the contrary, that it probably won't get done in 2023. Again, if we can find some of those, uh, Infrastructural, uh, Improvement Act monies, uh, to appropriate towards that project, um, we could potentially get the design phase going, uh, some portion of that overall expenditure, uh, authorized in 2023. So I do want to at least apprise council of it, apprise the public of it. So I do want to at least apprise council of it, apprise the public of it, leave it on the table, although we're not committing any funds to it at this point. So overall, the total capital funding request for 2023 for the sewer fund is $130,000. Any questions on the sewer fund? Seeing none, I will move, last but certainly not least, to the fire department. The fire department has a one request, and that would be for a new command vehicle. Members of the public, members of council, as you're aware, in, as a response to the flooding and horrible issues that we've, that we had to deal with as a result of Hurricane Ida, we did come up with a handful of actionable steps to mitigate against future calamities and water events of this nature. And one of those was the authorization and purchase of a rescue boat and trailer system to be housed and predominantly operated by the fire department. We have that now in hand, that has been, if not delivered, very close to being delivered. And the fire department is requesting the purchase of a new SUV to trailer, trailer the trailer too, to hook the trailer to and to use to transport to water events and trainings, both in our community and outside of our community. And they have identified a vehicle that they would like, and that vehicle has an estimated ticket price of $52,275, which would be, represent the entirety of their capital funding requests for 2023. Are there any questions regarding the fire department's capital request?
Is that adding a vehicle to the fleet or is that replacing something in the fleet?
Replacing.
Mr. Wanzig answered my question for the record. Thank you, Mr. Wanzig.
Yeah, I would, it would be replacing, although I don't know that we're necessarily, I don't know that we're necessarily solidified on the fact of getting rid of the vehicle that is, that is currently, that it would be replacing. I don't know that we should necessarily get rid of a very, very good running, fully paid off, relatively new vehicle when, when clearly we have deficiencies in our fleet. So I don't know that it makes a lot of sense to get rid of a vehicle that is in good working condition. So while it would be replacing a vehicle for the fire department, I don't know that we would be necessarily parting ways with the other vehicle. So in summation, total general fund capital requests totaling $1,072,410. Total sewer fund capital funding requests of $130,000, which brings the grand total of capital fund requests for 2023 to just a hair over $1.2 million. However, $547,000 and change of that would be funded by grants, which would be a net impact to our capital fund of $656,354. And just to put that in perspective, we currently have over $1.6 million in our capital fund, and that is before our annual replenishment where we utilize sewer and general fund surplus to replenish the capital fund. So the capital fund is in excellent shape. We have secured a host of grants and other alternative funding to offset the overall request, and this should be very, relatively speaking, diminutive impact to our, to the viability of our capital fund. Are there any questions?
Not a question, but I'm glad that we have these significant expenses, but we're in good shape to fund them. And so nothing is unreasonable, and it's good that we can do them now while we have the funds available to do it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, seeing no further questions, this does not require a, does not require a vote. The vote will ultimately be sometime in December when council votes to adopt the 2023 budget. So thank you for your time. Moving on to unfinished business, are there any items of unfinished business that any members of council have to discuss this evening? Okay, seeing none, we can proceed to committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening?
We had a finance committee meeting last week where we went over all of these things, and none of it was a surprise. And so thank you for having everything ready for us. And Dr. Ray had the small business meeting, they were very happy with the 5K, and they're trying to get more people involved in person. So it's, they're steadily improving with the small business community, get reach out, and he's trying to get more people involved here instead of just him. So figures crossed.
Thank you, Vice President Hile.
He's doing great.
All right, seeing no further committee reports, we can proceed to the mayor's report. Mayor Jack Seer.
Thank you. Just got a few things this evening. I wanted to thank Plymouth Ambulance for once again providing an excellent CPR and first aid class for our residents last Wednesday. We had really a ton of great feedback, so I hope to be able to provide this again in the future. On Thursday, I was honored to present our first gun safety education panel. Thanks goes to Pat from King Shooter Supply for her safety demo, Chief Beretta and Officer Self for sharing the law enforcement side of keeping your gun ownership legal, and for our partner Race for Peace for conducting an excellent panel on their experiences with gun violence. We actually started a really great dialogue on gun safety for all ages, and I really hope to be able to continue this conversation with similar events in the future, so please stay tuned. On Saturday, I had the pleasure of giving Congresswoman Mary Gay Scanlon a tour of our borough. We visited Frosty Falls, Bridgeport Veterinary Hospital, and Reach Indoor Climbing and Fitness to showcase a few of our businesses throughout the main business corridor. What was most exciting is that her team actually reached out and asked if they could visit our community, and I think that really is very telling for our town, tells me that members of other communities are seeing the amazing things that Bridgeport has to offer, and that it's only going to get better. On Sunday, I hosted office hours, and I had some pretty engaging conversations with some residents. And remember, while I do host these office hours once a month, I'm also available more regularly by phone and email. So please see the borough's website for information on how to get in touch with me or any of your other elected officials, because they also have emails. Last night, I had the opportunity to stop by the Bridgeport Fire Department's open house in honor of Public Safety Month. So myself and others got to meet the volunteers, see their equipment and vehicles, and got a tour of the buildings. So please remember that while they're always looking for more volunteers to go out on emergency calls, they're also happy to accept volunteers for things like event planning and fundraising. And there are also pretty crucial aspects to keeping the firehouses running smoothly. So, thanks, guys. And finally, just as a reminder, Election Day is almost here, it's November 8th, make sure to vote. If you're voting by mail, I would like to use one of the drop boxes provided by the county. There are locations at the Erie Street parking lot in Norristown, inside One Montgomery Plaza in Norristown, and at the Upper Marion Township Building. And as of October 29th, the boxes are going to be open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM through Election Day. So they're not open yet, but they're there, and there are other locations, but these are the closest ones. And that is all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, mayor. Moving on to the chief's report, Chief Beretta.
Good evening, everyone. So as far as the local crime, theft of motor vehicles, there was a lot on social media. We haven't received break-ins of motor vehicles where people are breaking into windows to get at contents, but they are going through unlocked cars. This has been primarily off of the Code Street area, kind of the south side of Bridgeport last week. So just remember, please lock your cars, do not leave anything of apparent value in your vehicles, so that there's nothing to take. Halloween's coming up, so Monday, Mischief Night, Sunday night, there'll be a couple additional police officers on patrol in the vehicles that we have. Thank you. So they'll be out, you'll expect to see them. So with that, as far as Halloween safety, use retro reflective material on costumes. If you're going to walk with smaller children, have the parent or the older child walk on the curb side, keep the smaller children away from the street. Use any kind of lighted or Siloam type stick stuff that hang off their bags or off their uniforms, so that makes them more available, more readily apparent to everyone. You'll notice that we have, one of our speed signs, our signs off of Depot and Forest Street, just as a reminder, and we're going to have one off of Ford Street as well to slow your roll, take your time. We had, we just got back to our traffic details with state police. As you might have seen, depending on what time you're coming or going, last week, we had a detail with the state police on East Forest Street coming into town from the Sweetsburg side on East Forest Street and also Ford Street. So you can expect to see a little bit more of those details to come in the future. I know that Mission Kids had a fundraiser here last Friday at Country Brew House, so that was good. Mission Kids is a very large part of our police operations to help us with all those child abuse cases, and there's more than you think. So any way you can support or choose to support Mission Kids in the future, individually, it's a great thing. You might have noticed that I'm starting to look like an Ewok, so I'm not shaving. I can't rival the president of Borough Council, of course, who looks like a vaunted Philadelphia Philly, but...
You've got, what, 30 days, 30 days to try?
It is. So no shave November, it's a big thing, and then you'll also see being, seeing the red Phillies caps on some of the officers for the next week. So go Phillies, hopefully we actually win the World Series. As far as... So I'd like to thank you for the consideration for the police department for the capital budget, and that's all I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you, chief. Moving on to new business, are there any items of new business to discuss this evening? Open forum and announcements, are there any announcements, any members of the DAAS have for us tonight?
Yes, just with, in accordance with my Election Day announcement, we are having our council meeting not that night, but the following night, correct? So it'd be November 9th, same time, same place.
That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
And next up is public comment, are there any members of the public that wish to speak No takers.
You can say literally anything, you have the right to.
All right, seeing no public comment, council could certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It is 8:24, we're adjourned, go Phils.
And go Union.